The Finance Committee to order.
Six thirty.
We'll be meeting initially here to do some traditional board work and then at, by six thirty, we'll recess and join the Board of Selectmen and the Town Manager for a presentation of the Town Manager's Budget. So let's begin by pledging allegiance and flag.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic where which stands, on my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I did the stairs.
So first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Actually, I've set you two sets of minutes. I set the minutes of February thirteenth, and while we're at it, we will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of March thirteenth, which was the shot little meeting we had before town meeting last Monday. So let's take them one at a time. February thirteenth.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of February thirteenth, 2023.
Second.
Okay, motion moved and seconded by Chuck. Any questions? There's a discussion about the minutes. All right, hearing none. We'll take a vote, and Mr. Dixon, you weren't here, so you could abstain. James?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
And I make a motion to accept the minutes of March thirteenth, 2023.
All right.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Adrian, seconded?
Doug.
Doug, okay. All right, any questions or discussion for a shot meeting? All right, to take a vote, Mr. Dixon.
Aye.
And James?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. All right. Year-to-date reports. Mo was telling me that since she was snowbound last Tuesday, she went through the year-to-date reports with a fine-tooth comb.
I was thinking that, oh my goodness, maybe I should have been looking closer at other times. I'll go through my list. Page two on the town side. Under the third little group down, Town Manager Executive Assistant Salary is fifty-five-hundred over budget right now. And we're, this was March ninth, so the second week in March, we still have a few months to go.
Right.
Page five, the Collector Treasurer Secretary's Salary is at sixty-eight percent. That one's, that one's going to be close. But right now, that's not a big concern.
All right, let me, let me back up to the Finance Committee Reserve Fund.
Page?
Got to get this straightened up, page four.
Oh, yeah.
Top of the page. It's messed up a little bit. The Snow and Ice, of course, we've, we've released that. The FinCom Reserve Fund, which is a forty-thousand-dollar fund, of which we've, we've used twenty-seven-five. What's, what's, which would, which leaves us with...
Forty-five.
Twelve-five. The fifty-thousand, what's missing there is the fifty-thousand-dollar special reserve that the town voted for, for fuel. And I thought we straight, I thought I straightened this out last week with, last month with...
That's right.
With Indiana, but the adjustment there is not the twenty-seven-five. The adjustment should be at fifty thousand dollars, which would make a total of ninety thousand dollars, of which we have allocated twenty-seven-five. So the twenty-seven-five belongs over into expenditures. And it's not technically an expenditure, it's a transfer, because we transferred that money to the department that had requested it. And trying to remember exactly what, there was some money for the DPW, there was some requests for library, perhaps? I'd have to check them out, but they, altogether, it came up to twenty-seven-five. So of the forty thousand dollars, that is our actual reserve account, if we've used, if we've reallocated twenty-seven-five, then we have twelve-five left. The other fifty thousand dollars, we haven't had any requests for, which is a good thing, because that money is set aside to help with accounts that go over in the fuel area, fuel, electricity, those two areas. And right now, most of the, well, it's interesting, about half of the town buildings are doing well with the money budgeted for fuel. They're at about fifty percent. And then three of the buildings are either overspent already or pretty close to it.
They'll need some help.
So I don't know if that's got to do with the original allocation was inadequate. Certainly with Old Murdoch, it's an old building, that could, that might be part of the issue there, too. Same thing with, with the library. But I got to get that squared away, because...
So we really have sixty-two thousand five hundred if you take the fifty and the twelve-five.
That's right.
So that's the first two lines on page four.
So there's just a FYI, if people were looking at that, wondering, it is a little confusing because it, you know, it doesn't explain where the sixty, sixty-seven-five came from, except that she just added it to the forty thousand. Not sure why. Okay.
And then on page twelve, right at the top, PND Coordinator, we've used eighty-four percent of that salary, so that's, that's going to be a tight one. Bottom of page thirteen, Police Department Department Head Salary is at seventy-three percent.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, can I participate in this?
Welcome.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm late. The PND Coordinator piece, and I'm glad you highlighted that, Dr. Ward, is reflective of the fact that the Economic Development Planning Development Director piece wasn't filled and so contractually, under union negotiations, if somebody's picking up a piece of a specific role, we need to increase their rate of pay. So we, you should also see on there that we're saving on the economic development portion.
Oh, yeah, you've only used twenty percent of your total budget. We just pick out the things to watch.
Yep.
So that we look at the budget you're going to finally present to us to make sure those things are corrected.
Sure. But just, I guess, just more so to know, like, those are going to, those pieces wash out. One will wash out the other.
The same I'm looking at for page thirteen and fourteen for PE, like, the PD reserves, they've used ninety-nine percent of it. Vacation buyback is almost thirteen thousand over budget right now. The bottom line is still sixty-six percent on that entire little grouping, but it, those issues are there.
Yeah, I had caught the vacation buyback, too, because it seems to be, well, that's a buyback. I take that back. I was thinking it was vacation payments, but the buyback obviously had to do with the chief retiring and...
Is he the last one on that old contract?
No, but, but with that said, there were a few other retirements that were also on that old contract, and so that why, that's why that line is suffering.
Oh, that's right.
Because it wasn't just the chief, there's a couple others as well.
There was two more, wasn't there?
Yep. Detective Ross was one, and the other is escaping me at the moment.
Jacoby?
Yes, there we go, thank you. So that, and I think a lot of what you're going to see when you're looking at that sheet in terms of wonky numbers or anything that's, like, significantly overspent, it was because of some type of personnel change. You know, we try to insulate ourselves as much as possible and plan for when those things happen, but on the police side of things in particular, it was three retirements that we didn't know about going into the fiscal year.
And of course, page seventeen, Fire Department Overtime, they're again on track to be over budget. This would be the third year in a row. This year, they don't seem to be as much over budget as the last couple of years, because twenty-one and twenty-two are, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought it was close to a hundred and fifty thousand over budget on overtime, plus or minus a little. So right now, they're at ninety-two percent still left in their overtime budget, and my understanding, Chief Smith raised the rate a little on the on-call firemen to try to bring them in rather than paying overtime. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. You know, for, for what it's worth, the chief has tried to come to the table a little bit, and I think for that particular line item, the solution is somewhere in the middle in that, you know, I think part of the responsibility is on Chief Smith to try to find ways to rein in that line. But I think the, the other piece of that is the town has an obligation to try to fund that line a little more realistically, and what I mean by that is that if it's the third year in a row, it's not a fluke, it's a trend. And so we probably need to, you know, fund that line a little bit better and then have the chief try to pull back a little bit, and we'll meet somewhere in the middle on that.
The other, years passed, last few years, the other line item that was always stuck in my craw was the spear houseman. It's kind of a wrong term for a spear. It's, it's the ghost houseman. And I know we had some conversation, Dr. Ward and I, met with the chief earlier in the year, and he was able to get that line item back and check. And it had to do with who was being called in to do the, the extra work. And so that part was a plus, because he was able to pull that in. And at the end, some of it certainly has been shifted over to the overtime. And it's, to the extent possible, you know, you hope people are going to work within their budgets.
Right, and I think the OT piece is important to highlight, too, because, you know, once again, we try to plan for as much as we can, but the Fire Department was just snake-bitten this year in terms of injuries and the need for, you know, long-term leaves due to surgery or pregnancy or other things, and those kind of pile up after a while. So if you're trying to backfill those shifts, inevitably, if you're drawing from the same-sized pool, you're going to have to start paying people OT more frequently, and that number's going to balloon a little bit. But, but once again, it's, the conversation is that that line isn't just a blank check and that you need to try to work within your means as best as you can, even if you get dealt a tough hand for that year, from a staffing perspective.
Well, also, a few years ago, we worked with state, state gave a grant per se over a three-year period to increase fire personnel, which would, should have helped alleviate some of the overtime, but it didn't, because instead of having two men on the shift, we now have three men on a shift, which has created an exaggerated figure for overtime, which is even worse shape than we were in before. And I don't think anybody picked up on that, because that should never have happened. That, that's just bleeding in the town, and there's not a need for it. And then the Fire Department Fuel Over, they're a hundred and twelve percent, almost a thousand dollars over budget to date. And, and they're a very tiny building. I don't understand that one at all.
So I did ask about that line, and they brought up a good point, is that every time they go on a call and they open those bay doors, pretty much all the heat in the building just rolls out in one shot. And so it makes, you know, requires the furnaces to kick on and work extra hard, but on the fuel, the fuel line piece, I mean, that, that's across the board throughout the whole budget, not just exclusive to the Fire Department.
No, it's not across the board. I mean, the Police Department is in Town Hall and...
Library, Council on Aging.
We're all in at about fifty percent.
Yep.
And then Old Murdoch and the fire station in the library.
In the library, yeah.
Are all right around, have used all their allocation.
Yeah.
Now, I'm assuming that the base, you know, that historic base for each of the town's buildings, DPW was the, was the third one. They're, they're at about fifty percent. And those bays opened up a lot.
Yeah, no, valid point.
Yep.
So anyway, it's just, it's just striking that, we all knew that there was a good chance everybody was going to be over.
Right.
In fuel and electricity this year. And, you know, certainly, we've been dealt a better hand than we thought we might have when we were putting the budget together last year. But it is kind of, if you look at the, at the six town buildings, there's clearly some dichotomy between some of them that are well within their budgets right now and some that have used it all up. You know, and maybe it's just the nature of the, of the, of the plant, but Fire Departments always had to open the stores to go, you know, that's something new.
So maybe, maybe I'd offer across the board isn't the right phrase, but, but I would say that they're not the only outlier there, that there's a couple others we can point to, too, just to come to the defense of the Fire Department.
Yeah, it's just that the, you know, did they use more fuel than they typically would this year? We all know the fuel's more expensive. I mean, that's, that's, that's a given. It just makes you wonder why, how some building might be the building. I don't, you know, I mean, certainly there's a big difference between Old Murdoch.
Right.
And the newly renovated Police Department. Just one of those things to look at.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So I recall, at least I think I recall, that a number of departments topped off their fuels at the end of twenty-two, using the twenty-two budget.
Anybody that had some left in.
So anybody that had some, so that may explain some of the discrepancies.
Yeah, that could be.
It's a big one, though.
Right, I understand.
It's a big difference if you sat the year off with a full tank versus an empty tank.
Right.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Then on page nineteen, we have the Land Use Clerk. They've used eighty-five percent of their budget for the Land Use Clerk, and the total budget is at sixty-three percent, so that one might hit an over, over budget at the DPW Highway Police Special Duty, hundred and eighteen percent over budget. Is that because we cannot get retired police officers anymore?
I apologize. What was the, what was the line?
DPW Police Special Duty for things that need to happen.
Is that for, is that for detail?
I need to move some money around. Some of it was dumped in from paving, so it's, I got to go to, I got to do some cleanup in that.
Well, I know you have the money to be able to transfer in.
Yeah, so it's...
What I look at it is, is the line item, so that when I look at the prepared budget for next year, is this an anomaly that won't happen again, or do we need to increase it?
If you look at the line item, the line item's at three thousand dollars. Last year, the line item was at five thousand.
Right.
We, we cut it last year because of the budget.
Right.
In tonight's presentation, I increased it back to the five.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Yeah, because I would expect that if we're, if we're going to be putting a million dollars into repaving roads, there's going to be an awful lot of...
I, so the roads that, that we are repaving, I can use, if it's a Chapter ninety road, I can use Chapter ninety funds for the detail, or I can allocate some of that one-point-five, which we're looking at for this year, to put towards police detail. That, that fund is mainly for unforeseen circumstances, like we're going to take a tree down, we need a police detail, or something in that respect. Typically, we do not use that line item for road paving.
Okay, thanks.
Page twenty-seven, again, it's Heating Fuel for Council on Aging. They're just about nine hundred dollars over budget now, and I know that they didn't, they didn't get as much as the other buildings in town, but for our special election in January, my poll workers had to wear coats and gloves. It was that cold in the building, because the only thing right now that they can afford to heat is the dining room. So the games rooms are off limits, the puzzle rooms are off limits, they have to do all of their activities in the dining room, because they can't afford to heat it. And so when I look at the discrepancies, it's a concern, and they're at sixty-eight percent of their budget. If they have two more fills, they're going to have to come to us to ask for some more money there. The library is the same thing. They're at ninety-four percent of their budget for heating fuel, but they didn't get the big bump that the other departments in town received. That's my list for town side.
I've got a couple. The...
Page?
Snow and Ice.
Oh, yeah.
Which was before the last weekend storm. We're at about two-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit. That's after we released the ninety-three thousand dollars. So we've currently spent about four-hundred-forty-one, forty-two thousand dollars, and we know that's going to be higher, because it was certainly, it was an expense to that storm last weekend. Interestingly enough, the overtime is still under budget, not by a lot. Oh, used to be, though. Yeah, I figured, I figured a weekend storm, it probably wasn't under anymore, but maybe I'm getting ahead of myself. But next year's budget, we did add some money to the overtime from sixty to seventy-five, but we didn't add any money to the snow and ice materials. We know, you know, last year was over six-hundred thousand dollars. This year, it looks like it's going to hit six-hundred thousand dollars, and we still budgeted it the way we budgeted it many years ago. And what's the rationale? I guess that's what I don't understand.
It's holding out for global warming, I think, but...
Well, we've already figured out the global warming actually costs us more in snow and ice, because we have to deal with, buy so much salt.
Yeah.
Because the state won't let us use sand. You know, and half the time, what we saw at five o'clock in the morning is already melted by eight o'clock in the morning. So, you know, it's, it's, I know it's, it's, it's an expense that's, that's probably not going to go away, and we underfunded again. And I understand that it's, you know, one expense that we can kick up to next year to cover, but that's not, let's say, good, good financial practice.
Would you have a, a figure that you...
The outlier you kick up to the next year, but if it's, if it's a planned, if we know we're going to be a half a million dollar shot, it's, it's just a half a year, half a million dollar bite that comes out of the next year's available funding.
So, so that line is, is, and, you know, for all of you, I know all of you know, everyone in this room knows, but for anybody watching at home, it's typical to go over on that line, and it's typical that, you know, in so many words, underfund that line a little bit, because you don't want to needlessly tie up those resources. But I think part of the conversation is, and once again, it kind of mirrors some of the other conversations we've been having, but are we building a, a budget that looks nice and makes you feel good, or are we building a budget that's realistic? And I think that, that line item in particular, I think there's been enough data year over year that would probably, you know, give us, I think, enough backup to make an informed decision about some type of increase on that line. I don't have a number to offer at this point. I don't know if this committee has any input, or if you want to give it some thought. But I think just for the sake of displaying financial discipline, it might be nice to try to build in a little bit incrementally year over year to build that up a little bit.
Yeah, I agree. And then the other question I had was the DPW lighting. We're at about eighty percent now. And that's where, we didn't have any lights for a month or so on Central Street. Now it looks like an airplane runway.
It looks nice.
One of my questions has to do with, is it possible to turn off, like, every other light? I mean, are they set up to be able to do that?
On Central Street, no.
No? It's all, all or nothing?
All or nothing. And what's, what's there is set by Mastott for the proper looms for safety on the street. That had nothing to do with us. What I am going to do is you can turn down the brightness of the light. That is going to happen, but I can't do that till the contract's complete, which will be July. Once that happens in July, then we can have the company come in and turn them down a little bit. But till then, I'm stuck with what I got.
Is that, the tops of those lampstands shaded?
Yes.
Okay.
No, they, I forget the proper terminology for them, but you...
To keep the light pollution from...
Correct, yes.
School.
Sure.
I, I won't go page by page at school, because I know that you will be talking probably with the superintendent, but the, the areas that I found was the paraprofessionals, the Middle High School is right now twenty-one thousand nine hundred over budget. The middle school or Memorial School pairs are nine thousand over budget. The Memorial subs are at eighty-eight percent, so hopefully nobody else gets sick. And the tutors at the Murdoch Academy are eleven hundred over budget. So the, the paraprofessionals are a huge concern, because that's about a little over thirty-five grand. The custodians at the Middle High School are five hundred over budget, not bad. The custodians at Toy Town are two thousand five hundred over budget, and the custodians at Memorial are sixty-five hundred over budget. So paraprofessionals and custodians, I think they need to look at those two line items and...
Yeah, I'll, I'll make...
Figure out, make sure that their new budget that they're bringing forward is going to account for that, or they have a good reason why.
Well, yeah, I mean, I can only speculate, and I won't do that.
No.
I'm trying not to. But I can, I can think of a logical answer.
Yeah. But I, but it just, it just was, there was just too much to ignore.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
Anybody else find stuff in the snowstorm?
Any other questions?
So I do, I do have one on, on the school side. The one, the other one that caught my eye, and I saw the paras in, on many of the levels that were way high.
Yeah.
Is the, this is on page sixteen, right at the top, the speech and occupational therapists.
Ninety-five, ninety-five percent.
Yeah, nine, almost a hundred percent.
Almost a hundred, but, and I wasn't sure if they paid them for the year, if they have a contract with them, so I wasn't, some schools do it one way, and some schools do it the other way, so I don't know. Right at the top on page twelve, I think it is.
What page is that on, does?
Sixteen.
Or sixteen, rather. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Occupational therapists, they have six thousand nine hundred left, but they've used ninety-five percent.
I'm pretty sure they're using contracted services.
That's what I thought.
Instead of, they haven't been able to find a full-time therapist to employ, so they've been using agencies to provide a lot of the services to the kids. All right, anything else? If not, entertain a motion to recess and invite the...
Motion to recess at six-twenty-seven.
All right. All right, so recess, three minutes. Certainly, too, to get yourselves comfortable. Certainly, too, to get yourselves comfortable. Certainly, the, the purpose of meeting today is to review the town manager's draft budget. It's a draft at this time. And I know it's been a, a couple of weeks of fits and starts trying to get materials together. And hopefully, we're, we're, we're at a point where we can, we have the information we need to understand the budget. So I'll leave it at that.
Was the issue with the indirects resolved?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Would we like to do the pledge of allegiance?
We, we have, we're at a recess.
We'll do it again.
Oh, why not, why not do it twice?
Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. You feel you'll need it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for humoring me. And as the finance committee chair referenced, I, I will reiterate my appreciation. We had a couple moving figures, more so than typical. This time of year is always unique when you're trying to formulate a budget. We don't have firm numbers from the state typically. We're going off of estimates. But we also had kind of a sliding scale of figures for some of our big hitters, such as health insurance, that weren't necessarily finalized until late last week even. So I, I appreciate the grace from the finance committee and the board of selectmen in allowing us the extra few business days to shore up some of those figures. So to reiterate, this is a draft budget. You have a transmittal letter in front of you. So there's a couple items that we wanted to hit on going through the budget process. Some of them carried over from last year, ongoing issues from the COVID-19 pandemic, for example. But the challenges are, are presenting in, in ways that are a little bit different than we saw last year. So the biggest impact that we saw, and as the finance committee had just highlighted, going through the fiscal twenty-three budget line by line, is personnel challenges, seeing turnover in some key positions. And that requires some organizational flexibility on our part. And so we have made some adjustments throughout the budget in some targeted areas to try to shore up and, and better predict some of those fluctuations. The other issue we have that's ongoing is energy costs, something that, once again, we just saw going through the fiscal twenty-three line by line. And so we're trying to do a better job of insulate the town from that as well. It's really a balancing act between wanting to make sure we're prepared and have the resources set aside, but also in a tight budget year, wanting to avoid needlessly tying up funds that might be better used elsewhere. So we continue to walk that line. Health insurance continues to be a challenge. That's something that, that nationally is an issue and continues to skyrocket. So Maya had given us a proposed ten and a half percent increase for fiscal year twenty-four, a figure that we've been working to negotiate down over the past several weeks. And they did, as of last Thursday, commit to a seven point one nine percent figure. That alone represents, you know, roughly a hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase in our annual operating budget. So it's a pretty significant increase even with those, those savings. The other piece that had a significant impact was the Student Opportunity Act. It's something that we've discussed at length in the ongoing town-school working group, something that we're going to have a little bit of a broader conversation. There is a side letter included in your packet that highlights the outcome and determination from that working group that, that I'll touch on a little bit. And so what we're looking at realistically is a situation where Winchton Public Schools over the past three years have seen an eighteen percent increase in their funding, which is excellent. Yes.
If I could just, there's a couple references to things that weren't, that weren't in my packet anyways. One of them is the side letter from the Revenue Sharing Committee. Another one is the final compensation report that was referenced.
Sure. So we, we can address those one at a time. So you have coming down on your left, the selectmen should already have them. If you can pass on the finance committee, my apologies, I thought that was distributed. So there were, there were two big takeaways from that.
I have an in, so I...
I'll wait till it all gets down here, but I'm going to, we, we have more if you want to keep them cruising.
One more.
Please hold, it's coming down. It's like, like we're at Fenway Park. Okay. So the, the town-school group had been meeting pretty much, you know, consistently on Wednesdays over the past two months or so, since, since it was established by the board of selectmen. And they were discussing a few points, namely revenue sharing, also cost sharing, but the sharing of resources throughout the community as well. So one big driver for this conversation was that over the past three years, net school spending had increased eighteen percent in a three-year period, which is fairly significant. And I think on the town side, the challenge is that a bulk of our revenue comes in through the form of real estate tax, which, as you know, is beholden by Prop two and a half. And so if you have something, you know, the town side expense for public schools was increasing at a clip of eleven percent over three years. But if we're only increasing our most major revenue source by two and a half percent, we're going to fall behind pretty quickly. That's an issue that we ran into last year, resulting in about two hundred fifty thousand dollar cut to the town side budget. And right on cue, it's something that occurred again this year. And so where the cuts that we made last year were so steep, there's, there's not many places left on the town side budget that we can, we can really beg, borrow, or steal from at this point. And the, the schools have really been a good partner in recognizing that. And so the only area left realistically for flexibility is the two thousand fourteen Prop two and a half override that everyone should be familiar with. We have pretty much laid out that, that realistically, we may need, the town side budget may need the entirety of that, which, which is about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars this year to make it work. That's with also trying to make cuts on the town side budget, removing some large ninety thousand dollar salaries to attrition. You know, we're, we're taking ownership of some of that hurt. But I think the, the other piece, as we narrow down on some of these numbers, is that we're trying to make an effort to not take that whole piece. We do want to show a little bit of restraint and, and really kind of put the work in to try to find a way to leave something on the table to increase the schools, even if it's fifty thousand. So it's something we're continuing to work on. But one takeaway from that working group was that, that the schools had effectively authorized superintendent King and I to work together on that to determine what that number would be. So it'd be something that would, that would work best for the town budget and the school budget in recognition that, you know, both organizations thrive when each is doing well. The other takeaway was trying to identify ways that we could have cost savings through sharing some of the, the roles and responsibilities in the town and school government. One of those that we highlighted was the, I guess, an opportunity in an upcoming retirement this August in the director of facilities at the schools. And in recognition of the fact that the, the town side operations already provide assistance throughout the school operations, that there's an opportunity to maybe not backfill that role and instead add it onto the existing DPW director role or equal. And then divide those costs in a sixty-forty or proposed sixty-forty split between the town and school budget. And so that's why you may see something on the proposed budget where it looks like the DPW director salary is getting cut significantly, but in actuality, it's because that's being shared with the schools. So that was something that was voted in support of by that group, four to zero. The most important takeaway, though, is that if that's something that this group at large agrees to, moving forward between now and the start of the fiscal year, everybody in that room was in agreement that there had to be some type of firm MOU in place to provide protections for the town side, the school side, but also the employee in question as well. And so that's something that the town schools group is going to continue to meet on and work on over the next several months.
So on, on that same thing, though, your DPW would be a sixty-forty split, but you added an assistant director for eighty-seven thousand five hundred. So we really didn't save money on that.
Mm-hmm, so sharp eye. So there's a couple pieces. So in not backfilling that upper management role on the school side, there still needed to be a point person at the schools. And so on the school side, there's a proposal to add, I believe, about a sixty-five thousand dollar, give or take salary as, as the point person on the school side and on the management side of things. On the town side, where the DPW director would be pulled in an additional direction of covering, you know, facilities and maintenance efforts for the schools, we determined there needed to be a point person on the town side. And so the, the salary that you highlighted, the eighty-seven thousand or so, would be that point person. But it's not a true full additional expense. And let me explain that piece. So what we're proposing is bringing on a town engineer. But the way that would be funded is using the, you know, a hundred thousand or eighty-seven thousand or so that we already have slated in the budget for things like MS four reporting, legal obligations that we have to carry through, peer review, for example, for engineering. So these are expenses that we're already incurring. But instead of paying a third party to do that, we're going to hire a, a salaried employee to fill that role. Excellent question, thank you.
How much, do you know off the top of your head how much that, those internal figures add up to?
So conservatively, it's almost a hundred thousand even.
Okay.
But I do want to know that they fluctuate. And so there could be years where it's a little under that, there could be years where it's a little over that, depending on development, depending on...
So we're hoping it's a wash?
Yes.
Like over a five-year period?
Exactly. So it, it would be a wash to the taxpayer, it would net zero. To the school side, it would be about a thirty thousand dollar increase in expense. And to the town side, it would be about a thirty thousand dollar savings.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And if I may also, you said MOU, for purpose of clarity, what, what does that refer to?
Memorandum of Understanding.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. I forget, sometimes the alphabet soup gets lost on people at home. And so that, that town-school conversation was crucial because it informed a lot of the budgetary figures that we landed on, you know, going forward for fiscal year twenty-four. Does any, and please, by the way, if you have any questions as we move through this, please do stop me and I'll be happy to, to answer them. As you go through the transmittal letter, once again, it's in draft form. So you will see some areas where there are notes to plug in a chart here or a graph here. But we do have a, a lot of the information there. So on the budget reconciliation, you can see that we're currently projecting a ninety thousand dollar deficit.
I'm sorry, just now, what page are you?
Ah, second, turn the page, second page.
Second page, okay, thank you.
So there's some red letter, letters and some highlighted pieces there. So we're projecting an eighty-nine thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollar deficit. Since then, it has brought to our attention that the Monty Tech figure has been firmed up a little bit in our favor. So it's going to be reducing down to seven oh six oh sixty. So realistically, we may be looking at a, a projected sixty thousand dollar surplus. But once again, a lot of these numbers are still fluctuating. So in terms of our goal of trying to return some resources from that override back to the Winchton Public Schools, I think we're going to be able to meet that goal as some of these other pieces settle. The other outstanding piece, and Mr. Kane alluded to it, was the UMass Boston Salary Survey. So that was a publicly released document in a board of selectmen meeting about a month and a half or two months ago now. But we are going to redistribute, redistribute it, yes.
Yeah, just a, a question on the budget reconciliation.
Sure.
Local receipts. The, the first round of this that you gave us was about four hundred thousand dollars less on the local receipts than this, than the second revised one. The other numbers are pretty much the same, indirect charges shifted a little bit, but the rest of them are all the same. But I'm wondering what, what drove that additional six, four hundred thousand dollars?
Sure, excellent question. So if, if I could just wrap up the expense side and then I'll shift over to revenues, if that works, just to keep it clean.
I'm sorry, I missed...
If I could wrap up explaining expenses and then I'll shift over to revenues. Thank you. And so the outstanding piece is the targeted salary adjustments we were looking to do for town hall employees. And the reasoning behind that was, once again, personnel-driven issues on the expense side of things. But we don't want to be needlessly overpaying and chasing candidates to try to get them to come to Winchton because there's obviously a workforce, workforce shortage. But the other side of that is we want to make sure that we're fairly compensating our, our current good, hard, hard-working employees. And, you know, if we're balancing the budget, I don't want to do it at their expense on their back. In the long term, it will save the town money by retaining these good employees instead of having a revolving door.
Okay, on that note, we have, and I, I'm going to go through each of the salaries. Town manager salary increased thirteen point four percent. Town manager clerk, thirty-four percent. Town manager executive assistant increased eleven percent. Town accountant increased fifteen point five. Town clerk assistant, nine point nine. Fire chief, nine. Treasurer assistant, seven point two. The assistant accountant, the network admin, the town clerk, the council on aging, the librarian, two point five. So there is a discrepancy. New people, with the exception of the fire chief, seem to get the going rate. But as you said, we have to recognize and reward the people that have served our town for years, and they're getting two point five. The police chief, decrease of ten point six percent. So if I look at that salary study that you did, it, it's not consistent. So how are we going to make them whole?
Great question. You, you came ready to go today and I expect no...
It snowed.
So, so to echo, that's, those numbers are outstanding still. So that's one piece that, that we're still working on. And so I think some of the numbers that, that you highlighted, some of the increases are, are market-based increases. Like it or not, they're market-based increases. And so some of the ones you listed that haven't been adjusted yet, it's, it's literally a matter of, we're still going through and calculating some of those numbers. So some of the ones you listed, you are going to see adjustments. Some of the ones you listed, you aren't going to see adjustments. And that's the other part of the surveys. It did come back and say, you know, for some of these employees, it's right on the nose. There's a couple that are even a hair over. I'm not going to reduce their salaries. But, but, but we're going to pull back and, and do a two and a half percent COLA. But I think the important part is trying to do a catch-up on some of these roles. And, and I think you hit the nail on the head in terms of, it seems like a lot of the newcomers are getting higher salaries. And that's just reflective of the fact that when we're going out and advertising for some of these roles, you know, you've all seen how long some of them have been out for. And we're not necessarily, you know, standing in Blair Square waving around Wad's Cash trying to get people to come here. I, I think we're, we're trying to be realistic and fair, but we want to make informed decisions. And so that salary survey, there's a couple edits. I'm still waiting to get it back. There are a couple errors on it. But we are going to be distributing that widely and, and we can dig into that a little bit more when we get into the final numbers.
Yeah, because as you say, if somebody leaves, retires, finds another job, we know we're going to have to pay more to bring somebody in, and we find that money. But for people that have been here for five, six, seven, eight years, they're still at two and a half.
Right, right, I, I'm in agreement. And I think my employees all know too that it's been my, my, my personal policy in the past to make sure that we fairly compensate them. They, they all know that we're fighting for them.
So maybe some of that Monty Tech savings could go to them.
Potentially, yep.
Before we leave that subject, the, I know there's a report that would add some background, I guess, to where the figures came from.
We'd like that.
And I assume that, that that's what the strategy was, was to try to get salaries, certain salaries that are, seem to be under what the industry paid... that are, seem to be under what the industry pays, closer to what the industry pays. My question is, are we doing it in one year? Or would we, would a better strategy be, let's say we're, someone's ten percent shot, and we typically would be getting a two percent, two and a half percent salary. Why not three or four years of a four percent, four and a half percent increase so that they catch up over three or four years? It's the one-year shot that makes it stand out so much. And is bound to raise questions, I would think, among the staff. Obviously, none of these questions have anything to do with the people who actually fill these positions. It's strictly.
The roles, yeah.
It's strictly from a perspective of.
Dollars and cents.
How do we address this need to gradually, or to increase salaries?
Right.
And my suggestion would be, you do it over a period of time instead of trying to do it one year.
Yeah, so, and I understand that, and I get the value in that approach. But I'd say, you know, typically, that's something you can probably pull off. In the current market, labor market, you cannot. People aren't willing to wait a year. And I think especially having that document in hand, what we'd effectively be asking is me having a document, knowing, not just guessing or thinking or, you know, hypothesizing, but me definitively knowing with an independent study that I'm underpaying them and saying, hey, just stick it out here. I'm not willing to do that, but I understand what you're saying.
Well, for example, you take the drivers of the Meals on Wheels and the Mart buses that take our seniors around. They're still getting less than sixteen dollars an hour, and some of them have been with us for seven years. They can go to Templeton, twenty minutes away, and start at eighteen dollars an hour.
Right.
Why are they staying here? Because they live in Winchon and they care, but it's going to get old fast.
Right, and it's, you know, it's an unfortunate reality. It's, the labor market out there is really, really tough right now. But under typical conditions, I do agree with you. I think when we try to step it in, you know, that helps us kind of cushion that a little bit. But I think for a lot of these people, it's not even that things just changed this year because of the creation of that report. If anything, that kind of informs us that they've already been working at a discount for several years.
They have.
And I'm not comfortable asking them to hold on any longer, but I appreciate where you're coming from. Anything else on the expense side before we cruise over to revenues? So Chairman Kane brought up an important point, and it's, on the local receipt side, there was a shift in why. So we had a pretty big divide. One of the things that made us kind of hit the brakes on distributing the initial draft report is we had identified a significant flaw in the calculation for, on the school side, for the, my apologies, the term is escaping me.
Indirect costs?
Indirect, thank you, indirect costs. On the healthcare side of things, and that we are calculating both the town-side expense and the employee expense. And so we had to go back and kind of review that. But what that also prompted was a tab-by-tab review of all of those items to try to make sure that there weren't any other cell errors or that we weren't carrying over old data. And so some of them, for example, indirect charges on the enterprise accounts weren't including, and I guess for anybody watching at home, what an indirect is, it's effectively a back charge reflecting town-side labor that aids, say, the water enterprise or the sewer enterprise or the schools. So if a town employee, for example, is helping figure out school payroll, then that's technically a school expense, and so that's an indirect cost in the most simple way. And so, for example, it wasn't counting my salary or my staff's salary. So when we're looking at a lot of the work that we're trying to do, trying to fix, you know, fix the water system, for example, I'd say it's pretty clear that my office has done a lot of heavy lifting there. There should be an indirect cost there. So that's one piece that I want to highlight and call out directly. And proportionally, it's at the same amount statistically as all the other roles that are listed in there. The other piece that I would highlight is looking at how we're projecting, right? Because revenues aren't a concrete number you're projecting based off prior year data. And we are going off of, you know, a one point oh one percent multiplier based on fiscal twenty-three partials. And I opted instead to go after one point oh one fiscal twenty-two actuals. So I think the benefit of doing that is it's an actual, real tangible figure, but also it's a year behind. So I think it's a little, it's conservative in that regard. But I think it's more realistic in terms of projecting what we have rolling through for revenue. So that was a cell change that we made on the revenue side that made up a big chunk of that. There's another piece I'd highlight in terms of cannabis revenue, which echoes the sentiment I'd put forth last year, is that, you know, I would advise against building cannabis revenue into your general operating budget. It's best served for, you know, one-off or short-term expenses, particularly capital expenses. And so in years past, where cannabis, I think maybe prematurely was built in, we didn't really have a track record for that. Right now, conservatively, we're projecting about a two hundred fifty thousand dollar annual total revenue for cannabis sales, the three percent excise tax, and I'm proposing putting, you know, forty thousand dollars or under of that as a revenue, as part of that figure increase you saw, to cover the debt service line for capital projects. But I wouldn't build it in to cover a salary or any other reoccurring expense. And so I think between those three points, that explains the local receipt increase that you may see. It's still very conservative, but I think it's more realistic.
When you're talking about revenues too, we brought this up before, and I don't think we had an answer on it. May two thousand fifteen town meeting, Article sixteen, the solar revenue was passed to be used as a special fund known as a capital stabilization fund that was never enacted. So is it a mute thing? Do we just ignore that town vote now?
Yeah, that's a fair question, and that's something that had come up in that town-school conversation. And what prompted that realistically was that every time we're going to figure out, you know, how much the town contribution beyond that school spending is going to be for Winchon Public Schools, the question keeps coming up, you know, what about the solar money? What about the solar money? And then I think, you know, due to some research from folks in this room, they kind of brought back to light that town meeting vote you just referenced. So with that, I'd say there are two pieces in my response to your question. The first is, I think it has since been determined and acknowledged by the schools that that isn't necessarily something that should be carved out and go to the schools.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
Sure, so I think that the folks at the schools would agree and have come to the, you know, same determination that based on what Dr. Ward just referenced, the town meeting vote, that that, that the solar money shouldn't necessarily be earmarked for the schools, or at least.
Shouldn't, should not.
Should not.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Yep, so that's one piece. And then I'd say the second piece of that is that that town meeting vote references it going towards capital. I would say.
Well, it says capital stabilization fund.
So I guess there's two pieces there as well, as we continue to break this down. So capital stabilization fund versus capital expenses, so that's one. I think the flavor that I've gotten throughout the community is, you know, their recollection is capital. And so the one piece is that when that revenue comes in, it does go into the general operating budget, but realistically, it's equal pretty much to the expense of debt service for capital. But paying debt service for capital is not a stabilization account for capital. So the second piece is when that, when that vote materialized, I did pass it on to legal counsel and they determined that the way that it was worded was not legally binding. But in addition, where there was no follow-through on the creation of such a stabilization account, that realistically, I mean, you know, I think the vote gave the temperature of the community in terms of their thoughts on that revenue source, but it didn't bind us in any way. So we're not out of our own self-determined compliance, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. Now, if the group would like to formalize that, we can work on that.
Well, you have a two-thirds vote that passed heartily. It doesn't seem right that we just ignore it, because there's nowhere in there that it says it's non-binding.
Excuse me. Sure, so I would say that if it's between, you know, this board and this committee, if there's an appetite to maybe redo that or formalize that in an upcoming annual, there may be value in doing that, if that's the direction you all want to go.
I think it's like everything else, you do an MOU with the use of a special director or point person at the high school. You do an MOU. It just clarifies it so we know what the money should be going for so that the school doesn't think they should automatically get fifty percent, the town doesn't think they should get fifty percent. There's a purpose behind it.
And I would say, it's a little bit of, it's kind of financial gymnastics, but if you were to set up a stabilization fund for the purpose of paying for capital, then if it's, if those researchers are presently funding capital, it's going to the same place.
And you might tweak it a little bit on how you word it, but I think we need to bring clarity to it, particularly because it was a two-thirds vote and it passed by a lot, and there was no mention at all that this was non-binding. So, you know, people that do their research, what, you just ignore it and so it doesn't count?
No.
We have to validate it.
So I'd say, and this question is to the room, but is that something that should come forth in the form of a financial policy from the finance committee?
Well, only if you follow through on it, because we have a few other financial policies that haven't been funded yet. You're not getting this on that one.
I tried, it's worth a shot. Any other questions about revenues? And thank you, Mr. Kane, for highlighting that.
No, I think that, you know, bringing some clarity to the issue of earmarking revenues, particularly new revenues for particular purposes, is something that we should address. I mean, I think that, I certainly understand the point that, at one point in time, the town voted to allocate money to a certain, from a certain source to a certain purpose, and we didn't do it. But on a personal level, I don't think we should. I think that what looks like new money today is money we need two years from now just to stay afloat. So I think it's excitement of the moment, but I think the issue of clarifying it, and if we're going to develop a policy around it, then to do so, because I think that there are a lot of people who can look back at those records and say, how come you say you're going to do this and you didn't do it? I mean, that's one issue. But the second issue is, should we do it? And that's, we need a good discussion around that.
And I think whatever policy can reflect those changes that have happened in the last eight years, but at least we could formalize it.
Any other points on that one? So moving on to page four with the header Personnel. So we touched on some of these already, but I just want to reiterate a couple points. So there's a salary survey piece from UMass Boston, which we touched on. The Planning and Economic Development Director role, the Retrition, we touched on, but I want to provide an opportunity if anybody has comment on that. So effectively, that role would be about a ninety thousand dollar salary. Nicole Roberts has picked up a lot of those duties, is the Planning and Development Coordinator. And so we're recommending an increase in her salary. And then the Economic Development portion has come up to my office where we've been pushing that forward. And so that has come up, and you see that as some of the increase in my salary that you highlighted. In the remainder, we're proposing turning back to the budget, but that is a non-union role. Mrs. Anderson?
I'm just wondering, because the Planning and Development position is basically a new position with new duties. Should it be posted?
I mean, if we were to, it would be internally, but it's.
Why?
Because it's a union, union role, an existing union role.
But the role that some of those duties are coming from was a non-union, and you've eliminated that position. So those duties have fallen.
Yeah.
And I think we need clarification on that.
Sure, so in the absence of the supervisor, by union contract, where that work is automatically picked up by the two other individuals in that office, we're required to pay them a split rate effectively in between where they typically are and where their supervisor was. And we covered a little bit of this in the finance committee beforehand. But either way, the important piece is that in the absence, where initially it was, you know, well, maybe it's just going to be for two months, and it ended up being for almost the better part of a year now, those responsibilities are picked up by those individuals. So the follow-through on that is a vote from the union membership to accept the extra work. But in terms of, like, you know, advertising for that role, we couldn't advertise for it without advertising internally first through the union, because it's a union role. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm not sure I like it.
Okay, but you got, you got what I'm saying, though?
Yeah, I think I understand what you're saying, but I'm not sure how I feel about that.
Okay. And then the other piece, once again, was the Director of DPWs and Schools Maintenance Role, which we covered. And I'd also say it's worth highlighting, and I didn't include it in here, but where it's a draft, I may, is a line about the Recreation Coordinator, so that's moved to a full-time role. It's a grant-funded position, though, and so that's kind of in a little bit of a gray area too. And I think I may like to do something to formalize that as well, just so it's not floating out there.
And are we going to post these positions?
Well, I mean, that one, it's not, technically not a town position, but it's already held by an individual.
But it's still a new position, and it's full-time, not part-time. So I'm assuming it should be posted.
I don't have an appetite for that, but maybe we can discuss that at some other time.
Okay, and the DPW, because of that's the new facilities, that's going to be posted?
So that one, actually, we did discuss, you know, pretty thoroughly as a group. And I think we did come to the agreement that that's one that we would gladly post. It's a non-union role. The Recreation one, I can tell you definitively, once it's built into the town budget, will be a union role. And I think that's the difference between the two, but for.
It's not right now, it's a new position, correct? I think, I think what I'm more worried about is you're setting a bad precedent by not doing things properly. That saying, well, for this position, yeah, there's a gray area, so I'm not going to post it.
I mean, it's kind of a non-traditional path. Is anybody else in this room sure of that concern? Okay, well, maybe we can discuss it more as a group later.
I just, you know, I just want to make sure that we cover all the bases. If it's something that should be posted, we need to post it. If it's something that we don't have to post, we need to make sure that we're moving forward in the right, in the best manner, in the proper direction.
Absolutely, and I think my concern is that, you know, the other piece is making sure we're fulfilling our obligations to union agreements that we have in place.
Absolutely.
And not fulfilling those obligations because we don't necessarily like the way it feels, legally doesn't hold up in court. And so a big piece is trying to avoid grievances from our unions and working in partnership with them as well.
The problem, the only union thing that I had a problem with is because that position has been vacant for a year and a half, so that.
Which position is that?
In Planning. Planning and Development. And so those duties have fallen to the other two that are there for a year and a half. And this is really kind of a day late and a dollar short because I was under the assumption we were going to continue looking for a new Planning and Development Coordinator. And just recently, you said that we weren't. And so now it's permanently changing those positions that you had previously changed and given us a layout of what their duties included. And that's where my hesitation comes from.
I think it would be helpful for me if you could, you know, provide us a timeline of, you know, when it was open, when the position became open, when we advertised for the position, you know, when the existing people started to take the, take on the roles and stuff like that, and then in my mind.
What duties are they doing?
Yeah.
Exactly.
That would help clarify it in my mind.
I would like to know to make sure that everything, we've got all our bases covered.
Sure, and we can illustrate that a little bit. But I would also highlight as well that the move as described is supported by the Planning Board and the Zoning Board, the two bodies who have, you know, the closest thing to oversight over those roles other than myself.
Understand, okay.
Any other questions on the personnel side of things? Capital, we've already highlighted this pretty extensively. It does include a million-dollar proposal, it's one of the. proposal, it's one of the biggest in recent memory for an investment in roads in Winchon, which is a significant accomplishment that you should all applaud yourself on. The important piece of that, and I think going back maybe to Chairman Kane's, I guess, breakdown of some of the revenues, but also specifically earmarking certain ones, for that million-dollar bond, we're proposing using a conservative amount of cannabis revenue to pay that over a five-year period, as well as some funds from the May-Bardi Restoration Project, and that's how that's going to get paid. But does anybody have any questions about the 14 items on the capital plan? I know we've covered them before as a group, but... Or anyone in the audience? Moving on, other funding sources. So, we talk a lot about revenues and different initiatives in town, but one piece that we always want to try to highlight is, it doesn't all come through that traditional source. So, one of them, in, I guess, an organization that this community is very grateful for having, is the Robinson-Broadhurst Foundation. And so, we have highlighted what we've put forward in fiscal, our Fiscal 23 request that would be awarded in fiscal year '24, we don't know if we're going to get them. This is something that we've also reviewed previously, but I don't know if anybody has any questions on those. Who wants to go first?
Go ahead.
On the request for the Community Preservation Act for five years for $90,000, have we informed Robinson-Broadhurst that the town voted no on this?
Not quite yet, but we have had conversations with them that that's something that we may withdraw. So in addition to that, in addition to the conversation of withdrawing that particular item, there are other items in here that the circumstances have since changed. So for example, the fireworks, $20,000, they funded through additional funds left over from the infrastructure project over there. And so there's going to be a revised list coming forward, where they've asked that my office prioritize kind of the top, the top ones, and the top priority, just, you know, it's no secret, is the water line.
When you said you may withdraw the Community Preservation Act?
So we let them know that we may. This was several weeks ago. Now, given the termination we received, we will be...
Thank you.
Any other, yes, Ms. Kane?
The self-contained breathing apparatus, the, is that the same thing we have on the our own capital improvement? That's, I'm assuming that's phase one of six?
That is correct.
And how many would that be buying, would we be buying for $26,000?
I don't remember offhand, unfortunately.
I guess what we're getting, how much do they cost a piece?
$3,000?
I don't recall exactly.
I think they're a little more than that, Chief.
Because I'm looking at...
Yeah.
But if I'm reading this right, we get five of those apparatus for $250,000. That's what the request is?
It says five self-contained breathing apparatuses for $250,000.
The first one on the Robinson-Broadhurst.
Right at the top.
Yeah, I think that's just a number carried over from somewhere, but that's a typo. So, to cut to the chase here, it's an identical request, and so...
So I'm guessing it's about $25,000.
Yeah, so if the Robinson-Broadhurst Foundation comes through, that's just going to knock it off entirely, it'll come off, it'll drop off our capital plan.
Right.
Because we're not, we didn't ask for $250,000 for...
In the capital plan, yeah, because the capital plan is financing it out. Thank you. On the next page, Grant Awards, so this is something, Fiscal 23 to date, so we still have a few more that I anticipate to roll in over the next, you know, remaining three months of the fiscal year. But this is the one we always want to highlight, and I think this really illustrates the hard work that our staff does, that my office does, and that just, you know, town employees in general, we're out there fighting for money every single day, and I think sometimes it gets lost in the mix. So if you're looking, you know, in a community of our size, and we have about a, what, $32 million or so general operating budget, between the town and the schools, we brought in about $2.2 million in grant funds for this fiscal year alone to date in three-quarters of the year. That's, that's pretty significant, that's an unheard-of ratio. So, I just wanted to take a moment to thank my staff for their hard work on that. We've put in a lot of effort over the past couple of years to really build a grant culture in Town Hall. I know traditionally it was a little more of a centralized effort, but everybody's kind of in on it at this point. And it's, you know, the folks, you know, working, in terms of our town employees, they don't just come in punch-in, punch-out, and go home and take their paycheck, they're out there fighting for money for people in this community, so please recognize that. The amount that we've seen this year is about a half a million dollars over what we saw last year, which in and of itself was a pretty significant number, at about 1.7 million. So, good work, everybody. Any questions on that? The next page has a pie chart that kind of gives you a visual, visual representation of our revenues and where most of them come in. So, orange being stated at 47%, it was 46% I believe last year. Real and personal property taxes, I referenced, is one of the bigger bites on the local side, it's 43%. Local receipts, nine, and then some smaller ones in between, but that kind of gives you a good idea for where the revenue comes in. Any questions?
Could we, at some point, could we get a breakdown of your local receipts?
Yep.
So we can compare past years' performances with the recommendations for this year.
Yeah, we'll do a side-by-side. I mean, would you like a fiscal '22 and a fiscal '23 to date, or...
I've got the to-date, we get the year-to-date reports all the time, I really want to look at, see a little bit of history as to what came in. You know, I mean, I know what we estimate at the beginning of the year, we all know that the numbers are all different at the end of the year, sometimes a lot of different at the end of the year. So, it would be most of what to see what we actually got in those different categories, and then see what you're projecting for this year.
Sure, so would it be that you'd like, like a five-year lookback of actuals, the year-to-date for '23, and then what we're proposing for '03?
You know, even like a three or four-year, the way you have the regular budget set up with, you know, 2020 requests, 2020 actual, '21 requests, '21 actual, it gives us some idea as to, you know, where are the areas where we may have been over or underestimating what a cost is going to be, because it's all guesswork at this stage of the game. But it's, it's the history of what the actuals were that is most telling, you know, particularly compared to the estimated. If I just see the actuals, I don't have the estimates, I don't know if they're high or low.
Right.
But if I'm just looking at the estimates every year, then it tells me what we thought we were going to spend or get.
But not what we got.
But not necessarily what we did. So both of them have value, I guess.
And could you make it just a little bit bigger, bonk?
If we can fit it on the page, so we do have a very...
Manscape.
So this just went back to '21, you got '21, '22, '23, and then what you're budgeting for '24.
Sure, so we do have a pretty illustrative tab on the budget worksheet that goes over revenues, so that, I think that's something that we can share. Katie, I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add to that?
I do have a spreadsheet I updated, it was five years. It showed, there's the budgeted, and then I did the actual. So I updated up until '22, because '23, we're only halfway through, but I do have a five-year comparison. It's right side-by-side, it'll show the budgeted, and then it'll show the actual revenues.
That's exactly what I look up, okay. And as I said, '23, you know, we get a monthly, monthly update as to where we are, so that gives me a pretty good idea as to, you know, where we are.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Katie. Any other questions on revenues? If you're turning the page, this is one that we're pretty excited about, the Water Fund and the Waste Water Fund. So, over the past two years, it's been a priority of my office to try to make sense of these accounts and get them right. And a lot of that has been, you know, the credit is due to the hard work of the two bodies sitting in front of me. But just as a rehash, about over the past five years, we've been, we've been running a deficit on those accounts, and three of those five years ate away at retained earnings until we nosedived into the negative. And as recent as this year, having to knowingly supplement one of those accounts using ARPA funds with the other to break even, and there was a lot of conversation at the time, about a year ago, setting those rates, but that, that hard work has paid off, so I'm happy to report the Water Fund and Waste Water Fund are both projecting to be in the black this year for the first time in half a decade. So, that's a pretty significant accomplishment for this community, and I'd also like to thank the ratepayers in Winchon, too, that's an important part of, of the conversation, important part of the equation, is that it's, when we're looking at these numbers on spreadsheets, it has a real-world impact on people that live in this community, and so thank you to them as well for taking on some of that extra burden and helping us financially right the ship on that. But the important piece that I'd want to highlight in this transmittal letter is that that work is not done. That requires continual discipline, we have the rate set for next year, but there's no rate for the year after. I would encourage the Board of Selectmen to maybe review that conversation in the coming months, so we're not down to the wire again like we were last time, trying to scramble. I believe it was the same day I was delivering my transmittal letter, was the day in the same meeting the Board of Selectmen were voting to finalize the rates, and I don't want to get into that situation again. But, once again, to hammer home, it requires financial discipline, it is difficult, it is a hard determination to make, but you don't want to start backsliding on this, you've made really significant progress, so try to stay ahead of it. And the transfer station, yes?
Will we have the actual budgets for the enterprise funds before?
Sure. So, so we are hesitant, are you talking about the revenues for those two accounts? So we are hesitant to put them out, because we want to drill down on the numbers a little bit more in, in terms of how they project out, and what's coming across for retained earnings. So I would tentatively say, by the time the final draft comes across a week from this evening, that there's a distinct possibility we'd be able to give more concrete numbers, but I just want to make sure that we're not overshooting and putting something out and then having to pull it back, so. The short answer is yes, we will get you some numbers.
If a week is pushing you and your staff, is there any reason why we cannot defer this final budget for two weeks, so we can get all of the documentation that isn't included in this, or are we up against a time crunch?
So, there are, in our charter and bylaws, certain time periods that we do need to hit, and so I would, I mean, I would welcome the breathing room, however, I would want to just make sure first that we're not going to...
If you could check on that, because, once you give us the rest of these documents, it's going to take some time to do the comparisons, and I don't think that we would be doing a service to you either if we just glossed through it and assumed you were right.
I agree. So with, I guess on that note, and I'll look into it when this meeting is over and communicate to the rest, but if we could do it on the third, April 3rd, is everybody available for that?
Yeah.
Yep, I am.
And I think it's nicer when you don't have to combine it with another meeting, because we always seem to be pushing one thing or the other to try and accommodate.
Well, we'll take a look at that one. And we'll get some good numbers on that. And then the transfer station, as always, is in good health. We are recommending, though, where we passed over fee increases for a couple of years, that we don't want to get in the habit of doing that year-over-year, expenses are going up, and so we are recommending a modest increase in a review, a review of those numbers, I'm dead serious. Yes, it's a financial best practice, so.
You have to, yeah.
Yep. And then beyond that, just on the acknowledgement side, and we can hash into it, but at a later date, but the work of my staff in particular, a lot goes into this, I know I'm the one reading the document, but this is made up of, you know, dozens of other individuals' hard work, as well as all the work put in by our volunteer boards and committees, it takes a lot to make all this run, so thank you to all of you as well for contributing to those conversations. Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm not going to get into all the weeds in terms of all the things I've highlighted in the budget, I'll stop by and see you sometime to do that, but I did want to bring your attention to the money tax assessment. You've budgeted $860,000, and the presentation we got the other day, it's $706,000.
Yep.
So, there's $154,000 that you'd be able to work with.
He's going to increase all these salaries that I will...
So, I touched on that a little bit, but maybe I move past it a little quickly. So, we do, some of the time we submitted this to now, we have received an updated figure, and so that's going to help us not show that $90,000 deficit, and it may allow us a little bit of wiggle room to return some of those override funds back to the schools.
And the, the second thing, maybe you've got an answer, you know, the school in-town transportation is a 22% increase. Is that a contractual increase, or is that a guesstimate?
So, so that is passed on to us from the schools. I wouldn't quite say it's a guesstimate, it is that we do have standing agreements with the school bus service providers, and they do increase year-over-year, so that's an established number, but it doesn't come from the town side, the school.
I know it comes from the school side, I was just thinking, 22% is something I might ask some questions about.
Yeah, I think it's a, just once again, not to blame it on COVID, but I think it's a post-COVID reality, seeing a lot of increases between staffing, fuel, you know, it's a lot.
But to have the reasons for that would be good.
Yeah. I mean, this year's budget is $680,000, and right now, we're at about $250,000, so we're staying within budget. It's worth asking some questions, I guess.
Yep.
I have three things. Page one of your budget, proposed budget, near the bottom, is the OPEB study for $8,250. What are we studying every year? We have OPEB, it's in place.
So, this had come up in a previous year, too, so it's, so pretty much it's an annual obligation to continually crunch the numbers, but it's, it's a set number, like, so that's the same thing, it's kind of a contractual number. So I get where it's like, the thought is, we've studied it, we've studied it extensively...
Ad nauseam.
Yeah, but it's also kind of a shifting number, so unfortunately, it's something that we continue to budget.
Maybe you could change the name, then, because it's not a study anymore. The second thing is the fuel. So if I look at the fuel lines for Town Hall over two years, it went up $2,500, Police Department went up $4,250, Fire Department for two years went up $10,000, DPW went up $4,000, Council on Aging $2,000, and the Library $500. So we have Council on Aging and Library, two huge old buildings, the least increase other than Town Hall. And I know at January's special election at the Senior Center, the poll workers are in gloves and coats, it was that cold, because she can't afford to heat the building, she only heats the dining room where they come to eat. So now, instead of doing presentations upstairs in the auditorium, they cram them into the dining room because they can't heat it. So it just, if you could look at that, it doesn't seem quite equitable. And I look at overtime, Town Manager's Office, Collector, Treasurer, Janitorial, Police Department, Dispatch, Fire Department, DPW, Cemetery, all have overtime budgets. The Library doesn't, the Town Clerk doesn't, and the Council on Aging doesn't. And I know their, Council on Aging is there late, I know Town Clerk works late, so maybe you could find a little overtime for them?
Potentially, I mean, some of that, some of what you're describing is contractual, so if there's instances, you know, for example, if the clerk has to work beyond their typical hours, we allow them to flex and use comp time in a different area.
And how do you do that with Council on Aging, when somebody comes in and you're not going to say, "Come back tomorrow," because it takes two, two-and-a-half hours just to get them on the phone, because they only have one phone line? And I know two, two years ago, two-and-a-half years ago, we agreed to give them a second phone line, they still don't have it. And people get frustrated, I mean, these are older people... I mean, these are older people. They try, they try, they try. And my concern is they're just going to say, "Well, forget it. So I won't go to my doctor today, or I won't get my prescription refilled, and we'll be having a different service for them."
Sure. So, I mean, the, the phone line thing is, for the record, actually came up a year ago in the budget discussion last year.
I knew it was sometime.
Yep. And admittedly, I thought that it had been addressed, and that, that was a shortcoming on my own part, but Selectman Anderson was kind enough to bring that shortcoming to my attention. And I have communicated with our IT coordinator who, who was on it, who had ordered the equipment but was waiting on some of the equipment to come in.
Year?
Well, no, not the full year, but, but some of it was him waiting on equipment. The other part, though, is he cannot install that equipment on his own. He's at the mercy of a third party to install some of it. And so there's been delays there. But rest assured, I have bumped it up to the top of the list. So it, it's something that will be addressed.
Thank you. I'll get out my soapbox.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just, just the acknowledgement, I guess, of the, if I understand it right, I realize that there are transfers and things that are voted on at town meeting that I included in, in the, the budget. But the, if it's apples to apples, the total of this budget is $17,651,000. Last year was $16,737,000. So it's about a $900,000 increase to the budget, which surprised me when I, when I get to the bottom line. I realize that, you know, that it'll be a little bit less with the correct numbers for Mone Tech. But it certainly, usually pause the, you know, cause the pause because the, the agreement to move the money, which I support, or at least part of it, the so-called Prop 2.5 money, is a one-time shot. And the, we know that the increase, at least the planned increase in school, net school spending, will go on for the next couple of years. So I guess my concern is that we're taking a big bite of the apple this year, and there may be nothing to bite next year.
No, I think that's a valid concern as, as we look in future years. It's, it's definitely something that, that I find concerning. And I think that partly informs some of our push to identify additional revenues in some other areas. I would highlight fiscal '21 budget was about $17,440,000. Fiscal '22 was $18,340,000. So we're still, we're still under that high watermark.
Those were right, but those are, those, taking into account the transfers from the various enterprise funds and expenditures that the town votes on in terms of capital improvements and a number of other things. So I'm assuming that there'll still be some increase to the overall budget based on other warrant articles that address other needs. At this point in time, the, the, the capital budget isn't included in here. I mean, you've got it coming in from other places in terms of, I mean, some of it is in terms of debt.
Right.
And, and leases. But I'm assuming that some of it's not in there, too. So I, I mean, there'll be some additions to that, to that number.
In future years, yeah.
That's why I say that. I mean, right now, the, the number that I'm looking at for FY '23 doesn't include whatever capital improvements we voted on back in, in the fall.
That's correct. And, and I would just reiterate the point that you made, that the Student Opportunity Act piece, those increases that we're seeing from the schools, we, we have another few years of that coming through, and it's probably going to be about, about the same amount. So last year, where it was a challenge to make those cuts in budget, we did it, but it was difficult. This year, we're real close to balancing again. We had to lean on the override, you know, to a degree. We're going to have to lean on the override to a degree, but we're going to be able to do it. Next year, you have less of that crumple zone, I guess, provided by the overlay. So it's something to be mindful of.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, balancing a budget in future, next couple of two or three years is going to be a real challenge. We kind of put all our muscles on the table this year.
And I, and I would say the important piece to highlight is that this budget as proposed is a pretty no-frills budget. It's not like, it's not like there's a lot of fat there. So it's something to be mindful of, is we really kind of cut down to the bone in a lot of areas over the past couple of years, and there's not much left to, to cut at. So one area that we're, we are able to grow outside of Prop 2.5 is growth. And I think that's something that you're going to see come through. I think, I think it's going to pull us out of the pan a little bit in the next couple of years in terms of developments at Forest Summer Drive, the development behind Hillview as, as those things start to get built. Potentially getting the White's Mills complex back online in, in the next few years from a broader perspective, I think, as a community. The financial challenges that you're seeing and that you're going to see that Mr. Kane is pointing out, the only way out realistically is by finding additional revenue. And your best shot at additional revenue is through growth. Now, does that mean, you know, dropping a Walmart on Central Street? No, not necessarily. But in terms of...
Pleasant Street's fine.
Yeah, yeah. But, but, but in terms of looking at, you know, a lot of the underutilized former industrial parcels we have in town and making a, a real effort at getting those back online, that, that's going to be the saving grace. It's pretty much the only way out. So keep that in mind.
Yes. Opportunity for public input.
Anything from the board? Public input, Audrey?
Yep.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Board. Good last time. Rick Lucia, Maple Street. Why do we get a rush and spend $140,000 on the Winchita Community Park barn exterior at this time and go into a five-year borrowing plan on something that is just nothing but aesthetics? Where that money, you know, it, I, I did notice that from 140, it has been reduced to 125, and the price of lumber continually drops. So I think this is not a good time to go after that. If you have additional money, I can bet you I could line up about 100 people that would say paving would be more prevalent than something aesthetically that nobody can see. The paving, you know, Pleasant Street is not pleasant, by no means. There's so many potholes there. And granted, we had a nice snowstorm that filled all those in for a short duration. But there is other areas that we are spending money needlessly. We do not need a recreation department. And how do you compensate somebody and move them into a position when they have no experience? I'll go to somebody else's comment that maybe that, yeah, this should be put out on the street, and it should be bid. Because you might find somebody that has experience in this, that is now maybe retired and might like to do it as a semi-part-time position. I can't see that being a full-time position. And as part of the new bylaw change, it did say that they would have a budget and they would help facilitate maintenance. Well, that's Brian's job. He takes care of cemeteries and parks. I don't think you need somebody sitting up at the park telling them that they should come cut the grass because the town has been cutting the soccer field in all areas for a long time around there. Which brings me to another thing. What the heck happened to the 52-inch zero-turn radius Husqabana lawnmower that the park bought when Mr., when Al Glant was here? He didn't like it because he wanted a John Deere, but the park still went ahead with their money and bought this $11,000 tractor mower. Where is it? Why isn't it being utilized? That's, that's just a small part. Let's see what else we have. You know, the park is supposed to be at no cost. So why are we doing a five-year borrowing on $140,000 when we're not even supposed to spend money on it? Then I noticed...
I apologize to interject, but can I answer some of these while we go along because I'm going to forget some of my answers?
What's that?
Do you want me to answer some of these questions or are they rhetorical?
No, you can answer them if, if you've got a good answer.
Sure. So the barn piece, and we go back and forth on this all the time, and we, we have this conversation pretty frequently. You know, why are we going to borrow money for Initiative X if we can just save for it? But when it comes to deferred maintenance on properties, you're going to end up spending more money due to damage caused by waiting and through inflationary costs than if you borrowed for it, especially where interest rates are, you know, still relatively low. So that answers that question. The other piece, though, is that we are actively working with the Robinson Broadhurst Foundation to ask them to fund that barn. That's point two. The third point is, given the scale of the investment made directly adjacent to that, it does not make good business sense to have a, you know, borderline haunted house barn next to your multimillion-dollar amphitheater. And so you're really setting yourself up by failure by not making that investment. By making a, a small-grade investment to repair the exterior envelope, you're saving yourself hundreds of thousands of dollars in the long run in structural repairs on the interior. So that answers that question. The question about the staff support, that's a grant-funded role. It's going to be grant-funded again next year, more than likely. And as that, that venue gets off its feet, gets off the ground and gets on its feet and starts bringing in revenue, it should be self-sufficient. And I think you highlighted an important part. But I think you're confusing two narratives as well. So one is, is that the amphitheater should not cost a taxpayer a dime, and that's, that's a commitment that I inherited, but I stick with. But the barn and the, the general, Winchita Community Park in general is not the amphitheater. It's an entirely separate thing that the community did vote to take on at a town meeting and, and did identify somewhere that they would like to make an investment. Your, your statement about Pleasant Street, I absolutely agree. I drive on it every day when I come into work. It's atrocious, and that's why we voted to fund, to pave it late in the season. At the, the fall special town meeting last year, we, the cold weather came in faster than expected, but that's one of the first roads that are going to get paved this spring. And the funding's already committed to that.
But wouldn't you think that when Robinson Broadhurst did all of this, they didn't see that barn? Because they're also looking to ask for them to give you $35,000 for the security system? You wouldn't think that that would have been part of one of the items that would have been buried in there? Because you've already raised it from 3.2 to 3.8, and they gave you $600,000 additional dollars. Why wasn't there $35 or something like that set aside already in there for the security? Because you knew, everybody in this town knew of the, the, the stuff going on up there, that the place is constantly tagged. And you go up and you constantly put paint over it and give them a brand-new, you know, place to start painting again. There was money set aside years ago, long before they even started the amphitheater, that had money put in there for, for security cameras and stuff when the previous town manager was in place. But he stole the money and gave it to the police department instead of utilizing it and putting it in place. You might have been able to get some of this, these taggers and stuff caught better than giving them a brand-new canvas to paint upon every time they do this. All those windows weren't broken out either, you know? We had cameras up, game cameras up, and they worked well, and they were a great deterrent. But once they knew that there was nothing there, have at it.
Sure. So to, to speak on the graffiti piece, so the game cameras typically get stolen, which is, which is one.
Put it high enough because they don't, they don't have a sense to look up.
The other is, though, to commend the work of Chief Wolski and his staff, they actually did follow through and do an investigation, and they did apprehend two juvenile individuals who had purchased spray paint. They traced it back to Bell Tates, and we have been in communication with their guardian. And those, those two juveniles are going to be volunteering at the park this summer, I'm happy to report. So we do follow through on that when we're able to. You got a long list, Mr. Lucia.
Well, I know. And we've got many more meetings. The other thing is the cannabis. How do, how do you not know the actual funds that you're going to get forth when they work on a calendar year? Their year has ended, their books have closed. You should have a good idea of the revenue that you're getting from them. They're not on a fiscal year. So here we are, three months, their books are closed, and you don't have, you know, you can't go by projections. You've got to go by actual and where you get that three-month jump before we even get to a budget time. You should have the actual numbers that we're getting from the cannabis. Granted, only one opened in the fall, but the other one has been open for a full year. So you should have a pretty good idea of what the revenues are coming from them.
Sure. So, so there's intangibles baked into those figures, which is why it's a conservative projection. So as you identified, up by the harbor, THC, Toy Town Healthcare, opened in the fall. And so while we do have a year's worth of data for Bud Barn, we have no data for how the opening of THC on the other side of town would impact the sales of Bud Barn. So it's not as simple as saying, "Oh, Bud Barn made $100 this year," just for easy numbers, "and another one's opening, so now it's going to be 200." That's not how it works. The, the second one that's opening is going to cannibalize some of those sales to a degree that we don't know yet. So we need to wait for some data.
So I think, I mean, as far as the fiscal year for them that just ended, you know, like Ms. Lucia said.
December.
December. Have we, do we know a figure that we're getting from them for their sales in calendar 2022?
Sure. And unfortunately, I don't have it directly in front of me, but Mr. Kane and I actually went through this pretty extensively about three months ago. So that, the, the way we landed on that $250,000 figure was, was backing out some of the known revenue.
Okay.
That Bud Barn was going to be getting and then tacking on about, I think, a conservative half of that number, what, that we assumed for Toy Town Healthcare.
Yeah. You know, going forward, we, we don't know what the sales are going to be, so we don't know what the amount's going to be. But, but you're right, we had, so we have a small, a small portion of that is a firm figure from their last year's sales.
There's been, some thought has gone into that number. It's not just a made-up number.
Okay.
Where are the numbers from the solar parks? There's got to be revenue from them. We were spending it long before we even had it.
Sure. So I, once again, I don't have that specific figure, but the, the solar, are you talking about like the solar revenue figure?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that one actually, it came up last year, is that it, there was an issue where previously we were accounting for the full amount, not recognizing that a chunk of that is already built into some of, some of our real estate tax figures. It's effectively a personal property figure. And so we ended up having to back out some of those numbers. So it's not quite as high, I think, as everybody thought it was. But we can get a more concrete figure going into the, the final presentation.
Please. Yeah. I'd like to see that as well.
All right. I'll just follow along and see where this goes. I'm sure there'll be more fun.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out.
Anybody else have anything to say? Anybody from the, any comments from the committee?
Motion to adjourn, 7:47.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Anything, anything further from board members? I'm hearing none. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourned at 7:48.